Call this meeting in order. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get approval of the agenda?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Open forum. Is there anybody here that would like to speak? All right. For the consent agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of the bills purchase orders, approval of the investments, tobacco license, donation resolution, resolution number 2017-70, a donation from Becker's Environmental Services towards the general fund. To resolution number 2017-71, donation from Sterns Electric Association Roundup Program towards a tricap bus service. Resolution 2017-72, donation from the Humidic J.C.'s to the Mouse Fire Department. Any questions or concerns?
One thing to note on resolution 2017-70 from Becker's Environmental Services, Urban did request that the funds would be used at the mayor's discretion. So if we can put that in.
I got a quick question on the list of bills. Just maybe, Mike, you might not be able to answer, but the, under natural gas, instead of plant energy, there was one, electric utilities, it was 2162, one was $938, and one, fire hall, ambulance station, like 260, 270. I'm just curious, the 938, where, if that's the city center, or how that breaks out?
I'm going to guess, they're based off of the different locations.
Right. Or if that gets, if the street shed over there, if that's all thrown in there also. The only reason I ask is because I was at a meeting in the senior center a couple weeks ago, and the thermostat was nowhere to be found, but it was, what, 85 degrees, and they had the back door open to keep it cool in there.
Oh, okay.
So, I was just curious if, I want to make sure that that gets a little attention, so.
Well, up here, we cannot get any, we're close to 82. It's usually pretty cold, so we've been working with the.
Okay, age back?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna say that's the, this location. It'll take me a few minutes.
Oh, that's fine.
But.
You should be an email or something too, if you want.
Yep, I'll look into that.
Okay, thanks.
Do we want to go through the change in the, in the areas?
Oh, yes. You'll see under action item 7F is deleted, the 2017 COCO project. We don't have any, we've paid everything up to date that we need to on that. It's just the county's final retainage payment. And then, today, we've received an invoice from Sterns County for their police services for the payment for the year, so we added that to for your review and approval.
Okay. All right. Is there any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, under reports, police department monthly report. Chief Moss.
Good evening. For December 2017, in traffic division or area, we had 15 citations for written per month, 59 verbal warnings and 19 written warnings. For the month of November 2017, 475 called or requests for service. Last year was 270, so we're up a bit there. Overall, we ended with ICR 3218, and last year we were at 3692, so we're down about 475 calls for the year overall. 33 agency assists, maybe common, maybe a bit higher than, pretty common around that 30 part. Some things to consider, we did have the county contract end, so that's been nice. Stephanie Robach is on staff now, and the schedule seems to be ironing out a little bit, so it's been good to have round work in some sense, normal. Want to remind the public that we are having some slippery roads with the recent plowing to the snow and freezing rains and whatever else. We'll take that extra time, leave that extra distance between vehicles in front of you and whatever else, and don't want to ride into more crashes than we already have to, so. Cold weather setting in, if you can put together a cold weather kit, that'd be responsible thing to do, and also a good thing to tell emergency services to arrive or a full service of whoever's gonna have to help you take care of business. Another thing that we've been working on this month, anyway, already, you know, see it in the December report, is nuisance violations, probably three or four vehicles that are beyond a reasonable period of time to put current tabs on, incident in yards, we start on those, as well as some debris and mattresses and junk being tossed off on the side of the road into some high grass area, so we're gonna be working property like that.
Okay.
That's the most of it. Any questions?
With the report, chief, we used to get a second page with this. We only have the one page now.
Can I show what you're seeing on yours?
Ah, just the front page, it says, you know, traffic and the agency assists.
Okay.
The second page, we used to get with the breakdown of citation.
Okay.
I don't think it was on the FPP site, we.
Can we get the second?
I'll make sure, yeah, I'll make sure that Felicia gets that up, the Paddy to get sent out to everybody and make sure it gets attached for next few months. Otherwise, most of that stuff looks like no driver's license, no proof of insurance, and a couple speeds.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, chief. City attorney report, Mr. Scott.
Just a couple of items tonight. One of the, this charter had end lease, charter serves the city, and they've got a head end where they've got some equipment, it's supposed like a distribution hub. It's located in the base of South Collin. That lease, we're working on, this is the third amendment, let's get to the end of the lease, we review the amendment, terms really don't change that much, we renegotiate the rates. And worked on that, and that's in the works. The only other item, you'll see, chief mentioned nuisance, the one nuisance that's furthest along. Last October, the council issued an order directed to Lewis to clean up their property and bait that nuisance, that didn't happen. So, I went ahead and filed a motion with the court to get the court order to direct them to do it, or the city to do it. And that's scheduled for January, January 12th is our hearing for Judge Cashman. So, by next meeting, we should have, have an order for you, and then we'll be moving on and get that, that situation cleared out. That's all I have, unless you have some questions.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Planning and zoning report. Mike?
Good evening. At the planning and zoning meeting held on December 4th, we had several items. One would be the portable storage ordinance. We brought that to the council, and the council directed us to bring it back to the commission for further discussion. And staff continues to wordsmith the ordinance language. Also, staff will be conducting a survey, if you will, of the commercial district to find out which properties this ordinance could potentially affect. And so we just report that information back to planning and zoning in January, and go from there and see, see which direction they want us to go with that ordinance. Nonconforming ordinances, the nonconforming section of the zoning ordinance had to be amended to comply with state statutes. The commission have reviewed the new draft, plan to move ahead with public hearings in January on the matter. The other item that came up was a Sterns County zoning ordinance amendment. The planning and zoning commission discussed this item and directed staff to draft and submit a letter to Sterns County in opposition to the amendment. This goes along with several other communities throughout Sterns County. There were some concerns with the amendment not complying with the Sterns County comprehensive plan, as well as Sterns County current zoning ordinances. Just to give a quick update on that, the Sterns County commission, Sterns County commissioners did vote in favor of the amendment on Tuesday, four to one, and the amendment to the zoning ordinance would allow for limited light manufacturing in ag zones by CUP process. And so, you know, there is some teeth to it, but there are some concerns that communities have. As far as EDA and MATA, last month, the council discussed billboards and possible quotes for referring the billboard over by Sterns Electric. Staff is currently working on getting quotes for different things, such as video boards, welcome signs, those types of things. And that information will be brought to MATA in January for further discussion. And just an FYI for parks and park and recs, last month, city staff did meet with school staff, center care staff, and county staff to start a discussion about sidewalk and trail master plan. And it was really just kind of a discussion to see if the city and school would be open to that type of thing. And there's going to be a meeting held on January 17th next month, and that would be from noon to 3:30. And it's really meant to just kind of find out if the community's open to moving forward with that. It would be a shared cost between school, the city, and the county, and center care would be involved. And really, it opens up the opportunities for grants in the future and those types of things, or, you know, looking at safer houses for school, all those types of opportunities. So, obviously, there's really no decision to be made yet on that, but center care and the county just wanted to make sure that council members and park and rec members were aware that the meeting would be being held. It would be a good thing for them to, you know, show up and find out what it's all about, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, it is 6:13. We are at a public hearing. 2018 budget levy, levy resolution number 2017-73, resolution adopting the tax levy in the 2018 budget, 18 through 22, five-year capital improvement plan, truth and taxation presentation.
Part of the requirements are to have an annual presentation to the residents to explain how we arrive at our budget, as well as our tax levy, and what will be assessed in the next year. So, to start with for our budget, we try to find one that's reasonable, we try to become as close and accurate as possible, we look at all of our future spending and where we can get our funding sources. We look at each year individually, in the next five years, and also out to 10 years, on what kind of projects that we're gonna need to start saving up for. And finally, we really try to keep our tax rate pretty stable, so that we don't have big ups and downs that residents will incur. For 2018, for our general fund expenditures, we're looking at $2,457,280. And then our other governmental funds, these are all other, just governmental funds with the city, our fire department, our capital projects, senior center, our development funds, those all together are about the same as our general fund, at $2,228,284. Then we also have our utilities, we have water, sewer, and electric funds, and when we add in the capital spending that we'll be having, that's at $16,277,717. So all together with the city and the utilities, we are just shy of $21 million for next year. If you look at 2017, that number was just over $17 million. So, the bulk of that increase is with our electric fund, and we have some pretty big projects happening next year. After we look at our expenses, we take a look at our tax levy, what we will require everyone for taxes next year. To start with the tax capacity, this is a total value of all of the property in the city, of the houses, of the land, of the businesses, and then that amount is given to us by Sterns County every year. And then we take that as a percentage of what we say we need to have for funding our operations, our levy, and that comes with the tax rate. And then that tax rate that we calculate is applied to every individual property, and that determines how much they will owe each year for their taxes. So for 2018, for our general, just operating levy, we're looking at $940,000. And you can see compared to 2017, that number is flat, and it's been flat for about six years now. So that's something that we're really proud of, that even with increasing costs, we're trying to keep that tax rate level. We also have two debt levies, and this is from bonds that we've issued for various projects. The 2013 bond will increase 5,000, and the other will stay the same. So overall, our total tax levy that we will send out to residents is $1,390,000. That's an increase of just 5,000 from the prior year. And although the dollar amount increased slightly, you'll see our tax rate is estimated to go down. So, although the dollar amount goes up, the burden should go down for the residents, and that's because the property values have increased. As I mentioned, we have some bonds. In the general fund, we have two bonds. We have the 2011 bond, which is $820,000, still left on that. And we have the 2013, and this is for the fire hall and ambulance, where we have about $1.5 million still remaining. So every year, we pay about $483,729 in debt service costs. And we have one bond in our utilities, in the sewer fund, with $100,000 left, and this will be paid off next year, so we'll be down to two. And this is really good for the city as a whole, because we don't have the financing costs associated with these. And a lot of cities tend to have more debt, so this is something that Melrose should be proud of. When we look at our tax levy over the years, you can see that it does go up, and as I mentioned, our operating levy's been flat, so this is all relating to debt service. However, as it's going up, you can see the amount of the increase on the bottom there is decreasing, so we are lessening that increase. We can also take a look at our tax rates, and you can see overall, in the last four years, they have been decreasing with the more significant decrease next year, at about 2.21% going down. And one thing we always like to look at is, although every city is different, every city has different operations, different projects, different situations, it's kind of nice to compare where you are with your neighbors. So you can see that dotted orange line is Melrose, so we're right about in the middle. We also like to look forward, as I mentioned, and we try to keep that tax levy flat, so we like to look forward and see where are we going to be if things continue staying kind of the same. If we keep estimating a 3% growth on tax capacity, which we've been seeing, if we figure that same 3% growth on the tax levy, you can see the estimated tax rate close to the bottom, over the next five years will continue going down. In 2020, that large bond for $340,000 will be paid off, so that will have a huge impact. We'd go from 67.5% down to just under 51%, so that will show a large decrease there. These numbers aren't exact, these are just, at this point, projections. This just shows our 2018 budget by fund, so based off all the different ones. For our general fund, we like to look at what makes up where our revenue comes from. I touched on our tax levy that we assess to property owners, and that makes up 38% of all of the revenue we receive. We are also fortunate that we get a good chunk of state aid called local government aid, and that makes up 34% of the budget. And then we also have electric franchise fees from customers that have electric bills that's transferred to the general fund for operations. As far as where the money is spent, you can see 41% goes into our street department, and this money is, a large percentage of that is set aside in our savings to cover our road projects. I mentioned before, we only have two bonds in the general fund, and we really try to save up and plan for these projects, so we don't have to take out any more. Police accounts for 25%, admin and finance is 17%, and then we also have fire, development, parks, and rec, et cetera. I mentioned we get LGA funding from the state. Next year, we're planning to have about, almost $836,000 that comes from the state. This is a great help to our budget, but there are risks that that money can be reduced at any time, depending on who the state's budget, the governor, economic factors, so we have to watch our dependence on that. One thing that is also important is to have adequate reserves in our general fund. We want to save up, because we only get our money from the state money and the property tax money, we get that twice a year. So while we get paid twice a year, we still have to pay for the street projects, the operations, all of that throughout the year. So these reserves help us cash flow while we're waiting to get our next payment. This shows our utilities, like I mentioned, we have water, sewer, and electric services in the city. The red line is what we're budgeting for 2018, the blue columns were for 2017. Slight increases for the prior year, and you can see in the very last column for electric capital, in 2017, we have $742,000 that we spent on projects, in 2018, we're estimating just over $4 million. So, that's why we were saying it's really important for us to try to save up and plan for those projects. One way we do that in our, in our general funds is our capital improvement fund, and this is our long-term savings. So this is how we can set aside money each year to try to plan for those projects. We discuss the projects every year during our budget process, we look at if they're urgent, if we can push them back, if we can get funding to help pay for those, and just how we can cover this with meeting the city's needs and without having to incur debt to do that. This is just showing the spending for the next five years, as well as what we've saved up. So that red line, or the red bar, you can see, that's for our public works capital aid, that's what we're gonna be spending on different street projects. And the orange bar is what we've had saved up for it. So you can see in 2018, 2019, 2020, we have spending going, and that orange bar you'll see chipping down. So while we've had good years where we've been plugging money away, now we're gonna be spending down on some of those street projects. And finally, just some things that we take a look at as staff when we're doing the budget and looking at what we need to levy and charge to fund these operations. Like I mentioned, our local government aid can change at any time, so we have to be careful for that. We look at how we're gonna fund these capital projects, if there's any changes in the legislative funding. Healthcare expense is a big thing to keep an eye on for the city and their levy limits. There aren't at this point, but there have been times when the county has said you can only charge so much for taxes, so that's something we have to watch. And we also have redevelopment unknowns, and that can change things very quickly if a new project comes that we didn't budget for. So it's a really quick overview. Does anybody have any questions on anything? So then with that, we would need to take action. We request on the resolution 2017-73, and this would adopt our tax levy and the 2018 budget. So the total levy we'd be proposing to Sterns County would be $1,390,000.
So is there any questions from anybody in the audience? All right, then we will close the meeting at 6:24. Okay, okay, take the action. So we'll take, the council to take action on adopting proposed resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make it. No, second.
Okay. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then we'll take action, the council take action adopting the 2018 to 2022 five-year capital improvement plan. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, 6:25. Okay. We're on to action items, 7, 8, 2018, propose personnel policy.
Yeah. We looked at our personnel policy and revised it for the coming year based off of changes that we've had. Some of it was positions that are no longer here, cleaning up that verbiage, getting the policy in line with our new insurance plans that we have, and health savings accounts, tweaking verbiage, and making some modifications with our cell phone policy, longevity pay, and the healthcare savings plan.
Any questions or concerns? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. B, flex benefit policy.
Yeah, so as of December 1st, we switched to a new health insurance plan, and with that, also have the option for employees to have a health savings account. This will be a change for our flex benefit plan that we have. The policy was originally adopted in 2003. Since then, there's been a lot of IRS changes, the Affordable Care Act, all kinds of updates that we needed to reflect in that policy, as well as being in compliance with our new health plan. So we're just looking to adopt the policy as presented.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Healthcare savings plan.
The state of Minnesota offers a post-employment healthcare savings plan for employees, so this is a mandatory program for any city employees. And what it is, is they set aside a portion of their wages to be used once you leave employment or retire for healthcare costs. The city does not fund any portion of this. We have four different groups, we have our exempt employees, our non-exempt, our police union, and our public works union. And they have requested modifying the years a little bit and increasing their percent of wages to go into that. Like I said, the city doesn't pay for any of this. Increasing these percentages would actually be a slight savings to the city, because it reduces the taxes, the payroll tax liabilities that you would pay. First, the employees have to vote on it, which they have done. The council and commissions would need to approve it, and final approval has to be given by the state of Minnesota. So after the various boards have approved, we would send it to the state for their approval, and we were hoping for an effective date of January 1st. One thing to note that I just wanted to point out, the non-exempt employees originally requested 9% for those over 24 years, or they asked for 10%. So we're just looking for approval for either option in case the state were to deny the 10%.
Okay. Is there questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to submit changes to the Minnesota HCSP with the effective date of January 1st, if possible?
Just one question, I guess. When we were going through all the other negotiations and stuff, why wasn't this with that?
The ASME did put it in there. This, I, the other employees had just asked for it afterwards when we were going through the open enrollment, that they would like to increase their contributions also. Like I said, it would all be contingent upon if the council approves it, as well as if the state approves it.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Fifth Avenue North from Molly's Hill, Woodstock.
I think that's me.
All right.
Members of the council, we were previously considering resurfacing Fifth Street North from Molly's Hill over Fifth Avenue. There was an area in there where the soil borers indicated it's a lot of peat material. We did a couple more borers to further define that. Unfortunately, there was more than we had even anticipated, so that kind of pushed the budget on that project higher than what was anticipated for this year. So, Mike was recommending that we push that out until a future time, so. I don't know if we require any action on that, or.
We moved it with the five-year capital plan, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to take action on it, then?
We have to act on it.
It was updated in that five-year plan.
So that was next then? Okay. All right. Possible land acquisition for park, future parkland? Who would like to talk?
I can touch on that. Stearns County had been approached by a family that is looking to sell their land that's adjacent with the city limits for park purposes. The county at this time wasn't in the position to acquire additional land. So I believe they had reached out to the city to look at this option. The city's comprehensive plan had shown a need for additional park space. However, it didn't identify specifically that area. So Steph is looking to have the Parks Board and the Planning Commission look at this property and see if this is something that would fit within the city's needs. And also if it was, to have Stearns County help provide funding for this purchase.
How many acres is it?
I was looking, I didn't see the exact acreage on that either. But I know I was approached by one of the county commissioners that, I mean, they would really love to. They just don't have the need for anymore. They have so much right now. And I was just hoping that, you know, I don't know if it is or not, but thought maybe bring it to them so they could do some investigating. Because I think, you know, that's, you know, you look across, that's some pretty land up there. If there's any possibility, who knows? So I don't know if there's any...
What's the timeframe on this? What are their...
I don't think they've set a deadline.
It sounds like they, they would, they're willing to work with us a little bit. Just they would like to see us do some investigating on it. It's something they want to do. They want to keep it into, you know, like green space. They don't want to, you know, solid office, farmland. They'd like to keep it nice. So they're just hoping, just start looking ahead and see if there's... I think the sellers are willing to work with people if it's something that might work. It's just they'd like us to do some investigating now. So I thought I'd just bring it to them. So... So then, let's see here, just send it to the Parks and Rec Board and Planning Commission for them to make some recommendations to the council. I was just wondering if there's a motion to approve?
I'll make, yeah, motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, F for taken out. G is Third Street project, final vulture pay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the contractor, private city building, is submitting their final documentation for the Third Avenue West project. So we're recommending, excuse me, final payment in the amount of $8,698.09. And they have supplied their IC 154 forms. Supplied their lien waivers and their consent to final surety and a two-year warranty bond. So we're recommending that payment.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, can I get a second?
A second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Brush pile cleanup.
In September, we had a pretty significant windstorm in Melrose. Kind of outside our standard policy, we allowed residents to bring debris and brush to the industrial site. At the time, I believe, the city staff was hoping to be able to burn that. But with review of the fire chief and the deputy fire chief, it was determined that that would not be a good option to do. Staff had reached out and got two quotes, or three, I believe. One was for 16,700, one was for 37,800. And we just received one today that totaled 6,500. So quite a difference. But we're looking to provide consideration to award to the lowest quote.
I don't have a problem going this route. You know, I had thoughts of, you know, there's a lot of good wood in there. But how do you allow people to go in there, kick on liability? Cut the wood up? You know, what, is there going to be a mess afterwards? There's a lot of stuff that we could end up dealing with if we went that route. This is probably the safest and quickest one thing. Expense, it was an unfortunate event that happened. Whole community benefited, whoever needed it. So I, you know, I don't think 6,500 would be money wasted.
The only thing I want to make sure is have whoever, Mike or Gary, reach out and verify that we're talking apples to apples. The whole thing's going to be gone, done, and brushed because there's such a big gap in top bid to lower bid.
Contingent, we'll put a contingent down.
Yeah, and I did talk to Gary, and he did talk to a couple other places, other cities, that have had cleanup crews come in just to weed out some of them that they've had problems with where they don't clean it all up. So it sounds like some of them that were not on the high list on other cities. They just may have not gotten a full call.
Yep. All right, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion contingent Gary's satisfaction.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Room rental rates?
A review of the rental fees with surrounding cities and meeting rooms was done. And it looked like the average was between 75 and 100 dollars. The city currently charges 40 dollars. They're looking to increase the rental fees for the next couple of years. And also, right now, we don't charge a security deposit. So we're looking at starting 100 dollars for rental because we've been having quite a bit of damage to the carpets and the rooms going forward. So to have that deposit in case there is continued damage to go.
And is garbage included with that? Because I know I seen, there was like 12 bags of garbage here a couple of weeks ago. Isn't enough when it comes to stuff like that. And I seen that a couple of tables were pretty beaten up the one day.
Yeah, so we have been running into some issues with that where we've been subsidizing the meeting room fees as a service to the city. But now with the repairs and maintenance that come with having these groups in there, this would help to, to cover that as well as the damage deposits if there are quite a bit of damages with the tables or there's been things built on carpets and tracked in, so.
All right, any questions or concerns? Okay, can I get a motion to approve? Can I get a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Stearns County Police Services, I suppose that's for their help?
So we received the final invoice totaled 876 hours that they provided service, and the total amount for payment is 48,180.
Okay. Does that join with your records?
Yeah, it's almost 50 hours.
Okay.
They did have some time, they did have need to leave, so there was some... I figured in per shift, they figured in per hour, so.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay. Who's going to do the second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Old Business, First Street, Fourth Avenue, Bakery Alley, parking lots.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, last week, Mike Bradhorse, they asked me to just give him a cost update for his building report for this because the Fifth Street project was kind of falling out. Since that time, Mr. Krielman has learned that the state has authorized us, the city, to move forward with spending the $450,000 in grant money on street improvements on the First Street area and in the 400 block area. So the existing, and we last presented this in 2014, so it's been a few years. So just as a refresher, we're looking at the existing utilities. The red line is sanitary sewer. The green line is storm sewer. And the blue line is water main. So we've got eight-inch clay pipe, which has been televised by the Public Utilities, and they said it is in relatively good condition. I think it's been three years. It might not hurt to televise it again just to make sure. The water main, it's only a six-inch. We're recommending that that be replaced. And the storm sewer would be upgraded to handle the five- or 10-year design storm, whatever we can fit into that pipe, so.
What are you recommending with the water main?
I think we're looking at the 12-inch. There's currently a 10-inch further to the west. That's kind of an odd size. 12 inches more common. So we're going to extend the 12-inch all the way up to Fourth Avenue.
Well, I think that's good just because as you look at the craft lot and the 400 block, whatever gets built there, both going to have to be fire suppressed.
Yeah, and maybe as long as we're on that, maybe test it, go ahead a few slides. Yeah, originally, I had proposed that we extend the water main all the way past the 400 block, and that was prior to the fire. Through discussions, I think it was decided that we probably didn't really need the section in here. But I think, given the final circumstances, that someday, we're going to have to replace the water main in Main Street here. And that would put, you know, this whole area out of fire protection. So I think it's a redundant supply. You know, I think the cost in here was about 25,000 to extend it to Fifth and connect it into the new river crossing. So I would like to continue on with that plan. That would be done, not with this project, but with the bridge the next year. So we don't have to decide on that tonight, but something to consider, so. Okay, maybe back, please. So what I've done is that the street portion that's in yellow is what we're proposing to construct with this project. Again, starting down about Second, going past the city center, and ending just kind of diagonally on Fourth Avenue. This is the point right here where we would be adjusting the alignment of First Street to match in with the proposed new bridge project. So and what you've got here, I kind of drew in the Rock Arch Dam area. This is the new bridge here. And these lines are the, the drops in the Rock Arch Dam. I think there were 17 or 18 drops. We're still working on the hydraulics of that. It may be fewer. Right now, I've got the drops at about 4%. I think we can probably go up to 7% in longitudinal grade. So that would shorten the Rock Arch area and also reduce the number of steps. So that is kind of an iterative process with the hydraulic modeling that we have to go through. And then we're, as part of the next phase of the project, we're proposing to realign the channel, taking up some of the parkland, but trying to preserve that existing pavilion there, so. Next slide, please. The street, we're proposing 44 feet wide. That would allow two 12-foot driving lanes and two 12-foot or 10-foot parking lanes on either side, except for a portion directly east of the city hall here. We would be providing a 10-ton road design. And we're proposing seven-foot sidewalks behind the curb on both the north and the south side. I think there was some question about whether we wanted it on the south side back in 2014. I think, you know, given the commercial nature of the area, I think it would be a good idea to have sidewalk on both sides. But that's certainly something that we can have a discussion on. And with the parking layout that I've provided, we're going to probably gain somewhere between 10 and 15 parallel parking stalls in the downtown area. Again, the typical street, two 12-foot through lanes, two 10-foot parking. The sidewalk would be directly behind the curb. We don't really have enough leftover bullard to provide a decent bullard. You know, if it's too narrow, they just tend to fill up, pull the sand. And this probably, most of it will be maintained by the city. So a lot of times, they just like to put the wing up on the sidewalk and get it while they're getting the street. So we are going to hold the south curb line and widen the street to the north towards the city center here. So we are staying within the current right-of-way. It's sort of more centered, the roadway within the right-of-way. Again, the proposed improvements. I want to double-check with the utilities on the sanitary sewer. We are proposing it to extend it with this project to make sure that we can serve the craft lot. There's some unknown sewer drawn in the GIS, but nobody really knows where it is. So we're going to probably pick it up at this point and extend new sewer options in the craft lot area. Again, the water main, we'd like to replace the entire length with the 12-inch. We've been adding, adding fire hydrants in this corner and this corner down here. So and then storm sewer, we will be picking up the storm sewer currently on the Third Avenue. It drains a lot of the area of the downtown and discharges through this 36-inch pipe here. We will be providing a storm scepter or something of that similar type, which is a water quality treatment apparatus to satisfy the requirements of the watershed, so. Next slide. And again, here, I had highlighted the Fifth Avenue. Again, I'm recommending that we make that connection. Previously, it had been cut out of the project. But I believe for the money, it's a good insurance against fire protection, so. Next slide. Again, storm sewer, we'll be collecting that. There'll be more storm sewer on First Street North than there currently is today. We'll be picking up, you know, some of the drainage from the 400 block and bringing that into the storm sewer and then also from the city parking lot in this area. Estimated project costs, these are very rough. Given the time we had, I went through them today. I kind of updated them. We were previously at about 865,000, I think. But then we took off the 400 block from First Street, but we added in the Fourth Avenue project. So that was almost a swap in cost there. Baker's Alley was proposed for a two-inch overlay. I think we want to look at that a little bit more. I'm not sure that that's going to be adequate. So that cost may go up a little bit. And then optionally, Mike wanted me to look at the city parking lot between Fourth and Fifth Avenue. And I roughly costed that out today at about, about $50,000. And I think that one probably, again, we probably need to remove the pavement, make sure that we got eight inches of class five, and probably put three inches of a two of this back on there, restripe it. And I think we can pick up about four, four parking spaces in that area with just some reconfiguration, so. That's all I've got. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Schedule, I guess, I, the schedule I had put together in the proposal was pre-grant money. We were looking at possibly constructing later in the summer. But we'll notice the final completion date, the grant money has to be spent by June 30th. So we're looking for authorization to begin design tonight. We would approve the plans and specs and authorize bids in February 2018. And then open bids and order the project in March. And hopefully, begin construction in mid-April. Maybe the latest May 1st, depending on weather. And then hopefully, completing by June 30th, so. I think the asterisk on the February, March dates is that we may need to have a special meeting, depending on publication dates, if it doesn't go inside with the regular council meetings, so.
Do you remember, where did we put this in the five-year capital plan?
I thought we bumped this up to next year.
Did we?
Because we pushed Fifth Avenue back, so we bumped First Street up.
Because we pushed Fifth Avenue back, so we bumped First Street up.
Well, I think with the grant money now, it's a no-brainer. We have to.
Have to.
But you may have to shift. I don't remember if it was last year, if we did it next year or did it in 2018.
I'm sure it was 2018, wasn't it, Tessa?
I think so.
Then it's perfect fine.
We moved Molly's Hill thing too.
Yeah, just fine details now.
Perfect.
Mike, on the Fourth Avenue here, does that show a street or is that parking?
That's a street.
Okay.
It says no parking changes.
I couldn't quite read that.
Yeah, no, it's rather small. I forgot I liked that, but, you know, we would be looking at maintaining the diagonal parking on the east side and the parallel parking on the west side, so...
And on the north side of that intersection, I'm assuming on the, you know, this can all be figured out later, but the east side of that, northeast side of that intersection, we wouldn't do anything with that because that would be affected when the bridge goes through.
We got the diagonal line drawn.
Yeah, I've got that diagonal drawn in there, and whether that's exactly where it is or not, but yeah, it's going to be relatively close to that area. Our center line alignment starts to make a curve to head north at that location. So I'm planning that there would be very little, if any, curb that had to be tore out with the next project, maybe 10 or 15 feet at most, so...
Because honestly, when I look at the street where it comes in, the bridge doesn't look quite as far north as what we had. But I'll go back and look at the other drawings that we had.
Yeah, and that certainly, that's where that 10 or 15-foot, there's a little bit of wiggle room in there yet. I mean, I think what, where I've got it shown is probably optimal parking. If we could push it another 10 or 15 feet further to north, we...
It wouldn't affect this if we push it.
Correct.
The parking lot here next to City Center, unless that strikes on it, that wasn't part of this project.
No, that would be optional. Mike just wanted me to show that, I guess, you know, as we're judging the parking in the downtown area. He wanted everybody to know that this is a potential option in the future. I did not include any cost for it at this time. We're probably going to have to do maybe a small pond or a rain garden or something, you know, with the additional curve adjacent to the river with that, but...
Until something happens to craft drive or craft lot, there's really no reason to do it.
Is there any other discussion? Turn it again. So...
Where we sit today, do we need to do a feasibility study?
For First Street? I think we did the feasibility study...
Well, we did the feasibility in '14. I mean, Mike had originally asked me to update it. I don't know that we're going to provide a whole lot of new information. I mean, I certainly can come back as we get started with the design to give you an update on cost. You know, I gave Mike a number of about $3,500 to update the feasibility report. Given the schedule, you know, between this meeting and next meeting, that's going to eat up a whole month to do that. I certainly can do that if we could schedule a...
I don't see why.
Why to do it?
Yeah.
I don't either. We got it four years ago.
We got it four years ago. We have the grant. We're going to do it.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, my costs are plus or minus maybe $50,000, you know? And I know that's kind of a wide range, but given it's only one day, I think I'm on the high end of everything, so...
And as soon as you have it somewhat designed, I'm sure you'll have a better idea.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Put that money into the design instead.
Yeah, I, you know, if the council wanted to, we certainly could, but I don't see a big benefit in spending money to do that.
So we won't take no action on the feasibility study, is that correct?
We're going to take action to not do it. Mike, a motion to not do the feasibility study?
Second.
Okay. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Provide consideration to initiate plans and specs for the First Street or a project? Okay, all right. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. New business, League of Minnesota Cities Board, LMCIT Insurance?
Yes, the League of Minnesota Cities is looking for applicants to fill a position on their insurance trust board, and that covers general liability and workers' comp. And they're also looking for applicants to serve on the League of Minnesota Cities Board of Directors. Mike had offered that he would be looking to do this if the council and commission were in support of it. At the Monday night commission meeting, they had requested that with all the projects and various things going on, it probably wouldn't be beneficial for the administrator to apply for this. However, he's looking to see if a council member would be interested and thinks it would be beneficial to have somebody apply to sit on the board.
Looking for something to do? I concur with the, with the commission. I don't think that, I think if Mike's looking for something to do, we can find something for him to do. We have plenty going on here. I don't think it's a good idea that he's doing that. I personally know Dick said no, but that's up to you guys if you want.
I think we need the city administrator here more than League of Minnesota City.
Yeah, agreed.
Is there anybody, Tony, who wants to turn even that for the other?
Well, I don't know. I'll think about it.
Seriously, do.
I'll take a look at it, see what...
I think that's coming up real quick, huh? Before the end of the year.
Yes, yep.
So something, I think it might be something you'd like, so... So then, um, do you guys want to make some motions to hold off on or not doing this?
Concur with the commission or do you want a motion? That's fine.
We can push her.
Okay, you guys good with that?
And I don't need a decision if a council member wants to apply, they can most certainly...
Yeah, I think it's up to...
No, I think the council members at their own discretion. We just charge it to the administrator.
Yes.
Then we're on to informational items. 2018 boards, committees, commission, applications, utility commission meeting minutes, schools and conferences, but there's also streets, parks, maintenance worker, Romi Burcham recognition. What was that now? Here I have it. It's 25 years of service to the city. Pretty impressive, you know, the fine people that, you know, stay with a job, and Romi's been there. I've seen him four thirty-five o'clock in most mornings in the wintertime. He's always out doing a great job, very good with the people. We're very lucky to have him in our community, and Romi, thank you for all you do for the city of Melrose. So I just want to give him a certificate of appreciation. And let's see, everything else is good. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.